I stand for the pledge and this is Donald Mills Lee Lee. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We ask that you be with us here today and we ask that everything we discuss and we do in an orderly manner, everything we do, say pleasing to you and give us the inside and foresight to do people's work correctly.
Moving through the agenda. Have you all had a chance for minutes from their last meeting? I would like to make a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Mark Smith, approve. These are hyperexpletive. Don Mills, please. Is there any changes, corrections, revisions? Hearing that, I will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there any public comment regarding the agenda items we have today?
I believe abatements on the agenda, is that correct?
General, I think the discussion is...
Okay. April Johnson, Madison Township. And I am addressing abatements for wind energy. I don't know if that's specifically on there, but you talk about abatements. And so, yesterday I had a chance to speak at a commissioners meeting and I asked the question, why do you want to do business with a town that threatens litigation against a small town in Darlington for kind of protected citizens? So, that was reported in on the papers when they made a small ordinance and Ms. Baker said, I hope that doesn't require litigation. So, I thought it was really ironic because the town did that for health and safety purposes. I thought it was really ironic at that meeting, Ms. Baker from Apex Wind Energy responded with, don't I get a rebuttal? I'm not sure if you get the irony in that, but it sounds like she's really used to being in litigation. And because she expected that privilege, like you could import them. Is that who you really want invited to our county, someone who threatens litigation to be here? Against a county, litigation against a town that wants protected citizens from the noise and other safety concerns? So, that's my first question. The original ordinance unwind that we have for the county actually says on the first page that it recognizes that wind energy may hinder other economic growth in this county. So, do you give an abatement to one business that you've already recognized will hinder future economic development and growth? I'm not sure that that's a wise idea to hinder other future growth. So, please consider the abatements for this whole industry and as is acknowledged for that. I'm from Iowa, as I've spoken here before, you may know that. Charleston, Iowa, it's about 10 minutes from my hometown, the big shopping town, it's about 4,000 people. And they're replacing all the blades on their 10-year-old wind turbine farm. All the blades and the turbines are being replaced, so the hub. They're only 10 years old. They, my momma just told me, she said, we're trying to figure out why all these trailers were for out there. She's like, it looks like they're just hauling in all these trailers for people to live there part-time. Just want to fly out. They're not hiring local people. Those are not local people that are sitting in those trailers, replacing those blades, replacing all those hubs. They're in, they're out to the next wind farm, replacing those next turbine blades that are going to go to the landfill. So, don't be guilt trip that it's a green thing or behind the times because every one of those blades goes in the landfill. That's not green. So, another question for economic development in that original agreement, the county said, we have the right to take over and remove those wind turbines if the business doesn't. So, Fairbank, Iowa, they had three turbines installed illegally. They did not follow the codes for the county and they've been ordered to remove these three turbines. It was reported it will cost $11 million to remove these three turbines. Whether the wind company is being honest or not, I don't know, but that's what it was reported and that's what they're claiming. If we have a couple hundred or two to four hundred of these in our county and we had to remove them, it costs $11 million to remove three, we'd be financially devastated. So, please, do not give an abatement for these. They are not good for a county. It'll hinder other economic growth. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Any other public comment regarding the agenda items? Okay, moving on to money matters. We have some transfer. Jennifer, do you have anything on that?
Of course.
Looks pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I really don't think I have anything to add to that.
Just transferring a loan. $150 for one line item in the letter.
That's correct.
Do you provide your motion to approve this transfer? Donald Mills, approve. Is that your second?
Second.
Your discussions and questions. Looks like it's for a temporary diligence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to new business. We have a resolution to vote on for the lease agreement, the redevelopment committee. Mr. Jeff Peter was gracious enough to kind of explain all this to us. I thought a well-educated counselor would be better than... Building blockings. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. With the redevelopment commission, the current project that they have before them is an extension of some of the sewage works. And the financing for that will be paid completely from the redevelopment commission incremental revenue, so should not have any impact at all on the county. However, the security for these debts are backed up by property taxes if at any point in time the incremental revenue for the TIF district is insufficient. We do this for a couple parts. One is for investors to purchase these bonds, you're going to need that type of security. And the other thing is it gives you a much better industry. Something that I did bring with you today to kind of share is we look at... We look at the revenue stream coming in off of that incremental revenue and for all the projects that currently the redevelopment commission has before them, we look at covering all those debt service payments with at least 125% debt service. So, as you look at that chart, you've got the incremental revenue that comes in at about $1,005,000 a year. And those are under current assumptions that we're not going to have any more development, which certainly we hope to have over the next 20 years. But it shows you that revenue stream that comes in at about $1,005,000. There are outstanding bonds for the initial construction of the sewage works. Then we've got this potential sewer project for the extension of pipes and stuff in the ground, estimated at $9 million. Includes both pipes in the ground and an expansion of the plant itself. Now, these two projects are going to come separately. Currently, they're going to do the pipes in the ground and then probably about a year from now we'll be back and it will be the expansion of the sewer plant. They're also doing an expansion for water, which you've got in there. You can see interest payments only for those first five years. And that is because the redevelopment commission at this point in time has laid out in their plan that they're going to make interest-only payments from the revenue stream and then they're going to use the residual balance that they have in their funds to pay off the principal amount, which is about $2.125 million. So, the proposal for you today is to approve this lease for the new extension of sewage works, which does include a property tax backup. But again, the documentation there is to show you that we don't have no expectations that we'll ever get to the property tax point, but that is something that needs to be pledged and secured. If I have to answer any questions.
The last answer I have, the most I have, property tax, right?
Yes.
That's not a comment, I understand. Is there other, let's say the TIF revenue drops and it's, looks like it's going to be short. Are there other avenues that the RDC can take to make those payments at revenue and tax the county?
Well, first, you'd have to run through all our excess revenue and run through any reserve cash that you would have on hand.
Well, I'm thinking an option would be not pay that ban off rather than that finance it, to not have to come up and pay off of the ban.
Yes, you will have a series of refinancing options.
So, there are other options that the RDC can do rather than just say, hey, county council, come to the tax payer and raise the rate to pay the sewer.
Yes, and the first one would be you have the ability under that water ban to put those bonds out, stretch across that entire 20-year period.
Any other questions?
Yeah. How imperative is it that we, as far as not moving up progress or anything, that we approve this today? Or maybe John could answer that, I don't know. Only because it appears there's about 40 or 50 pages here and I'm not one to usually approve something when I haven't read it.
My understanding timing-wise is we cannot issue these bonds for the project until we have an estimate of the project, a detailed estimate, which I believe you're getting bids in late June, wanted to award bids contingent on financing in early July. So, I don't know how yours schedule would work out to try and keep on that timeline.
If we voted on this in July, John, would that potentially hamper any progress on the project?
There are three entities working on this, Mark. The regional sewer district, the redevelopment commission, which is the bank, more or less, and the redevelopment authority, which is just a solid vehicle to facilitate the debt. But the timelines that run side to side, if you guys, if you guys wait a month to take action, it'll slide everything, knock them out. And so, right now, all these schedules are synchronized, I guess, is the way to say it, so that when the construction comes in, construction bids come in, they can be approved and work can begin in the fall. So, again, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, you know, I know that work in the fall will be important before we get weathered, but... And this lease, in its simplest terms, is just exactly what we did with the jail. The redevelopment authority will actually issue the bonds. And all this lease says is that they will then be obligated to lease the facilities to the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Commission will take the TIF revenues and pay rent and the redevelopment authority will take that rent and pay these bonds. It also is contemplated in the lease that the RDC would turn around and sublease the facilities to the regional sewer district. So, the regional sewer district's the one who ultimately controls these facilities. It's a 20-year lease, which means that it runs concurrent with the bond obligations. And as soon as the bond obligations are paid off, the lease says that the redevelopment authority will convey these assets to the redevelopment commission, who of course could convey the assets to the regional sewer district. So, although some word got really carried away, put together 40 pages, that's the idea of it. But it's exactly what we did with the jail building corporation, which is a not-for-profit corporation that owns our jail. It's exactly the same thing. They receive rent from the county and then they pay their bonds. And we've got about, I think, six years left on that bond. But again, if you, if you delay it, it would impact the construction and what it would impact, but whatever type of period you're in.
Isn't this also the same thing the schools do?
Yeah, it's the same thing the schools do. They form school building corporations and in fact, most schools have three or four of them. And the reason that they do this, the reason that they do these leases is these lease bonds don't count against the statutory debt limit of the county. So, they allow more flexibility for like a new jail or a road project or something like that. But yeah, this is the same financing vehicle schools use, parks, departments use. But for us, it's our jail corporation, we use it for that.
Any other questions?
I have one that I can make some terms. What, you don't understand what it is?
We won't know until the time that they're actually bid.
You have the estimates.
I would say on this one, we're probably going to be in the mid to high threes. And again, that depends on how quickly we get the market.
Okay. I know the last person who were paying a little over 25%, the obligation we had with the first sewer. And I think for the two consultants, it was going to be paid off in five years, which was great. When we first, I was, I was, I wasn't counsel, I think I was maybe commissioner. When we first created this TIF, we were told that the TIF was handled correctly. They're great, and I agree, it can be a great tool. But I picked up on something yesterday at the RDC meeting that kind of concerned me. And I know the RDC is looking at maybe tipping another area or two in the county. And one that concerned me most was the one on 231 South, which might be a good growth area, maybe, maybe not. But the two TIF borders would touch. And therefore, you can spend money out of the current new core TIF into the other TIF. Never really concerns me because we've seen how that scenario has worked in the city. The city should have had all their TIF obligations paid for in the south end of town years ago. But now it's extended out to the north end of town, runs through town, and they're just spending money left and right out of the TIF that should have been fulfilled. And those monies going into the coffers of all the taxing units that are touched by that TIF. That concerns me that it's going to be an ongoing thing that will never end. And I would just like some reassurance that once these obligations are met, that the monies that are collected now and going to pay these would go into the county coffers at least, and all the coffers, the schools, the townships, whoever else was involved there and, you know, help out the public. The taxpayers that saw an increase in their obligations this year. And I think, I don't know for sure, but if the monies were not collected by the TIF or collected by the other taxing entities, the change in the property tax obligation wouldn't have been as great this year. That's just my opinion. So far, I've not got any reassurance that this won't be ongoing forever, man. That's my opinion.
If I could just kind of offer two things for that. You know, we often see where redevelopment commissions continue to tip activities for different opportunities. And you may have bad examples here, but I can give you some good examples of where that happens as well when we consolidate the TIF area. One of the primary ones that I've seen is in the city of Beech Grove. It sits on the south side of Indianapolis and it is ordered by MTRAC, which is a non-taxable, for-profit quasi-governmental entity that requires a whole bunch of services and doesn't pay anything. And it has a fence that looked like a prison right next to the main entry to the city of Beech Grove. And Beech Grove needed to redo that, basically give them a gateway into their city and their downtown. Well, on the south side of 465, they had property that ended up being developed into the Super Bowl, Archilope's. Taking those revenues and spreading them up and creating a gateway in their downtown and now they're actually doing a greenway all the way around the city. You know, they took revenues from one area and shared it in order to give funding for a bigger whole picture of what they wanted their community for to look like and get things done. The other thing I would mention on the incremental revenues that are pre-collected by the redevelopment commission would not go directly to all the other units of government if the redevelopment commission did not exist. If the redevelopment commission did not exist or those assessed values are released back to the tax base, they only raised the tax base and lowered everyone's property taxes except for certain rate-driven funds. So, like the CCD fund for the county would see a bomb, the CPF fund for the school would see a bomb, cumulative fire funds in the townships would see a bomb. But the other result would be everybody's property taxes would go down. Those units of government would not directly receive those monies because they're all capped according to their normal maximum levy, which, you know, last year's growth was 4% above the previous year. So, you would see a little bit of decrease in rate, which might give you a little bit more decrease in circuit rate liabilities, so everybody might collect a little bit more taxes. But yeah, don't be under the impression that if it goes away, that $1,005,000 is going to be spread even to the other units of government because it won't happen that way.
The whole point of, is investment in tipping is encouraging infrastructure that raises the tax base, raises the AB, more people here and more income tax. And that's the purpose. If you weren't thinking that way, investment, then it wouldn't be any of it, so.
Yeah, and you know, you normally have that but for, yeah, but for the extension of the sewer, but for the extension of water, but for whatever other projects we do, we would not be developing this future development and the assessed value that comes along with it. And you know, even for those that are initially in place or that we know is going to happen, if we can capture that revenue and expand other services, you know, a lot of development, they talk about the rule of nine. If you have one parcel in the middle and you create incentives and development around it, those nine properties that touch it will all be benefited. Likewise, if you have something that's lightened, it will depreciate the nine properties around it. So, you always want to look at what is it that you can do to either improve or keep from declining in areas like that.
Only the different, nothing. The ban for the water is a five-year program. That's a borrowing, short-term rather than a long-term bond. But it was put into many minutes of the RDC. The intention was to not be in the water business by the time that bond, that ban comes matured. So, we were looking at some private entity or some entity taking that water business over by the time that ban matures. Now, will that actually come to fruition like Christopher Balling, but good, but that's the intention today. So, I'm sure that would be, that's not a long-term project and not intended to be.
So, Dan, I don't, I don't get the impression you drew this up. This is something that was drawn in my room.
Lisa Lee, Ice Miller says on the lease, when she drafted it, yes, she's the bond attorney.
So, what, you know, as counsel, you always think about what could go wrong. And I see in here that there's insurance for $3 million for coverage, so that's a good, a good thing. The default paragraph, which is paragraph 15, Dan, if there's a default or some, something that happens, how do you see that playing out as far as the county and county's potential responsibilities other than just taxpayer who makes that decision?
Well, you don't see defaults on these leases because there's a trust indenture that's entered into by the parties as well. And the property taxes actually go to the trustee. The RDC can't miss a payment. The authority can't miss a payment. These things are all kind of locked up in a trust indenture. And so, frankly, the idea of a default, the one that I've even heard of is sometimes people forget to renew their insurance, but there's actually a procedure every year which catches that as well. There's a report due to the trustee where you have to certify that you have paid the taxes, paid the insurance and made all your bond payments. So, there are other documents. This trust indenture brings another third party to make sure everything is done. And the actors, the RDC, the redevelopment authority, really have much to do with it. Jennifer works with these trustees, you know, money comes in, money goes out, but they're really almost self-operating once they get in place. Of course, they need to be that way in order for investors to buy these bonds. They may need that assurance and so, it's locked up really tight.
So, yeah, and so I wanted, I wanted Dan to explain some of that and point that out just because you've got to think as a counsel, what's the endgame? What kind of problems did you encounter? I know Mr. Davidson's talking about how he didn't get to look through it. So, I think if something like that could give an assurance that probably there are going to be some of the issues that could be with the lease situation, so. And plus, the insurance is in there, I think.
You know, it appears to me that what we've got here in the idea of transparency, number one, John Q. Public doesn't have any idea what we're doing here and what we have bonded Montgomery County for. And number two is probably this counsel doesn't, doesn't really know either. And how much, how much money, number one, taxpayer's money is involved in this from the beginning and this has been ongoing for probably 12 years at least. How many, how many years has it been ongoing, Dan? And it's all been taxpayer's money, even though there's been numerous grants, that they've been taxpayer grants. We don't have a timeline on anything that I know of as when the dirt is moving and we don't have timelines. We need to have transparency. When is, when is the timeline? But how much money is actually involved? And I think we need that. I think the public needs to be involved and to be, I think it's a great idea, great idea, and I'm not opposed to it at all, but we need to involve the public and say, we've got millions of dollars involved, the taxpayer's money. We need to tell them, this is the time and that we have all kinds of businesses out here on 32 salivating to come to Montgomery County because we have no zoning, no planning. And they're wanting to come to Montgomery County because you don't have it. And they're salivating to come into this area and to do all these kinds of businesses because we've got a school in plan and now I understand we're going to have water. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. But we've got to inform the public of what we're doing. And how many, how many million dollars we got involved in this?
Up to, right now, for this, it's up to $9 million. We have not bid anything out yet, Dick, as far as the sewer or the water, to see what it would actually be.
Now, I think it's wonderful that we're doing this, but we need to, I think we need to inform the public of what we're doing. We've got to be transparent in these things. That's, that's my idea, and I think it's a wonderful thing. But I think we've got to kind of keep people involved if we've got $9 million, you know, that's, that's what Everett Dirksen, of course, I'm too old for that. You guys don't remember Everett Dirksen. He says, you know, "Be in here, be in there," and sometime we're talking about real money.
Yeah, that...
I'm in favor of signing this. Yeah, I'm in favor of progress, but we, we need to inform John Q. Public of what they're spending their money on.
To that, Dick, I don't know what you had, Dan, but I had asked Jim Peck to come in today to really lay out for us as a council and public to see exactly what's going on there. Jim?
And I'm in favor of his resolution. I would say that, but I'm in favor of all this stuff, but I just want to be informed.
Right. And I agree, a well-educated public and council is a good thing.
Just one thing before you get started up, I saw anything about this. Jeff, I wanted you to speak to the excess TIF determination. We've really been all around it so far, but RDC is supposed to give the council a letter about the excess pass-through. And I think really, yeah, and the piece of paper you give out says everything about there's no money to pass-through, given the numbers, but I would just like you to speak to that real quick. And then I think as far as your concern, just me, not that I'd try to run you off.
All right. I'll head back to you, we'll productive somewhere. Yeah, on the annual AB pass-through, you know, as a redevelopment commission, as a council, you have to look at, is there excess revenues being collected that you can give back to the tax base? And that is something that you are required to do or should do as a matter of practice. Because of the amount of projects that you have before you, because of the projects that you have that are contemplated in the future, at this point in time, you do not have any excess revenues that you can pass back. If these projects go forward into the future, if assessed values and real incremental growth increase in the TIF district, that may be a possibility, and that is something statutorily that you have to do every year to make that determination. But for this year, you have more than...